Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. My name is Mike P. Charles, Battalion Chief of the Orange County Fire Authority. I work in our Communications Office. Thank you for being here. I want to point out a few things. Housekeeping issues, restaurants are outside around the back. There is a sign up sheet. If you came in through the foyer, there is a sign up sheet. There are actually a couple of sign up sheets there. If you would take the time to let us know that you were here, that would be appreciated. Also, this is being broadcast on the Internet. So if those of you that might have family members that were unable to be here, but they have connectivity and want to listen, they're able to do so. I want to point out, once again, there's water and Gatorade. You can help yourself and take advantage of that. And we're going to set a timeframe here. We're going to be able to be in here until 8:30. So we're going to try to keep the pace moving. And that includes our questions and answers at the end. So I appreciate that if you would be mindful of the time. And I want to just mention the reason why we're here. And that's to get ahead of any potential problems. This is a gathering of the county fire authorities, the county sheriff's office, Public Works, and the Emergency Management Division to come together before we have something and to address the concerns of the community. And to kick us off this morning, or this evening, a strong supporter of public safety, the 3rd District, Orange County Supervisor and OCFA Board Member, Todd Spitzer.
Well, I'd like to welcome you all. But before we get to my comments, I always like to start with a pledge of allegiance. And I looked around and there isn't a flag, but we're just going to face this way. So if you'd please stand, if you're able, take off your hats, your covers, place your hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. May be seated. There was a flag somewhere. So as Mike P. Charles indicated, you know, we're here to get ahead of it. But Friday night, it didn't feel like you were getting ahead of it. And so I'm really here to hear from you. And I think it's pretty amazing that we had a fire that I flew over it on Sunday with Al Murray, the chairman of the Orange County Fire Authority. And we went over with Chris Concepcion, the Division Chief who you're going to hear from later. And things were in pretty good shape on the surface. But you know, it floods out here and we have more fires and it's hotter than heck. And so I think we can all anticipate we might be in for a very long season. So I think it's pretty amazing in light of what happened just over the weekend that we're already here tonight. And you have everybody who has something to say about the deployment of resources here to not only tell you about how we're going to continue to deploy resources, how we're going to be proactive, and then to answer your questions. I really do want you to raise if you deserve that. You have been my Canyon constituents for many, many, many years. And the one thing you are not is shy. So I want to encourage you. Yeah, they're going to applaud. So I want to encourage you, if there is something that needs to be raised tonight that is really important in terms of our actual plan, please raise it. If we run out of time, I want you to take the opportunity. There's going to be information sheets. Contact my office. Make sure it gets memorialized, put it in writing. We need to document everything so we can be as effective as possible. It's really my opportunity. I want to introduce a few people to you. So if you do call me, you'll know who you're talking to on the other end of the phone. I do want to introduce my Orange County Parks Commissioner, because he's very, very concerned. And of course, we have the staging area at Irvine Regional Park that Dave Hanson, Dave Disgrader, everyone knows. Just a little applause, that's fine. Dave likes the applause, but it's okay. Because we want to move fast. I want to introduce my Field Deputy for this area, Melanie Eustace. She's also my Communications Director. And Carrie O'Malley, who's also here. She staffs me for the Orange County Fire Authority where I'm on the Executive Committee. And then we have Carolyn McEnery from the County Executive Office. So she's responsible for making sure that all the county department heads and all the resources from the county are properly deployed. And then a gentleman that you have not met, but I think you're going to be very, very impressed, is our Acting Interim Chief at OCFA, Jeff Bowman. He's former chief at Anaheim. He was in San Diego. He's got 30-plus years of fire experience. And we're just very pleased that now he's here tonight, but that he's overseeing our agency. And so welcome to Chief Bowman. All right, so to kick it off, I'm going to turn it back over to Mike. But I'm just, I really, really need to hear this presentation tonight and your concerns. Because I do wear all your hats. I am your mayor, I'm your city council, I'm your Fire Authority representative. And I am really your point person in terms of all these agencies overseeing, including the Sheriff's Department. So while they have their own leaders and independently elected officials, I feel that I am kind of the go-between of all these agencies. And so I'm really looking forward to hearing from you tonight. Thank you for coming, because I know it's Taco Tuesday at the Silverado Cafe. Sam, do you think I stole that? And also, I know there's Angels Baseball. So let's keep it to 8:30 and then you can still get out and catch up on whatever cable or Tivo or whatever you all use to catch up. All right, God bless you. Thank you. And if you want to talk to me afterwards, I'll be outside.
Thank you, Supervisor Spitzer. One other housekeeping item. If you did get an agenda, you'll find on the back of that there was a lot of good valuable contact information. Different county departments that are represented there with their phone numbers and their website addresses. So if you haven't picked one up, make sure you grab one of those one way out. And then I'd like to introduce to you, Orange County Battalion Chief Ken Cruz and former Orange County Fire Captain and now FEMA Decision Support Meteorologist, Pete Curran, going to give an update on the weather.
Thank you, everybody. My name's Ken Cruz. And I am your Emergency Planning and Interactions Coordinator, Battalion Chief over at the Orange County Fire Authority. And I just want to speak to you briefly about some of the efforts that Supervisor Spitzer spoke to about a little bit of pre-planning and getting ahead of this. We do have our sand and sandbags getting ready for the rainy season before we're here at Station 15. And tomorrow, we also will have, we have a trailer that we use that we had to refill from Seal Beach. It's a pre-filled sandbag trailer that's got 900 sandbags. We're going to put it up at Station 14. In addition to that, Public Works, I'll let them speak to it as well. But they have their piece of it where they've got their sandbags and materials, hay bales, and waddles and so forth over from Jessica Canyon. And they're going to be bringing a stash of that, but I'll let them speak to that. And I also want to let you know too, that amongst the efforts that we're doing in the emergency planning side of it is one of our own, George Ewen. He's our Fire Defense Planner. And he's embedded with the Bear Team, which you'll hear more about tonight. And George was also embedded with the Bear Teams on the Freeway Fire and the Santiago Fire. So George is bringing with us a lot of experience in that effort. And I'm going to turn over the weather piece of it to our resident weather expert here, Pete Curran. But I just want to let you know that between the Orange County Emergency Management Organization and up on the hill there, and our agency, and the Forest Service, and Predictive Service, we have been gathering information from multiple sources. And we will continue to all winter long, Pete being just one of them. And always trying to gather the most up-to-date intel. And even today, as things were coming in, we were pushing out the warnings and so forth, just as they were coming in from our connections at the National Weather Service and, like I said, and from the Predictive Services Union. So like I said, we're trying to lean forward on those efforts. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Pete.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening, everybody. As I said, my name is Pete Curran. I'm here to talk a little bit about the weather this evening. And we're going to start off talking about the tropics. And we thought we'd make it sort of tropical in this room so you can get a feel for what's going on down there. If you put your attention to the screen here, here's a depiction of Tropical Storm Odila. Odila is still Tropical Storm status. She is in the Sea of Cortez area. You can see the center there. 50 mile an hour peak wind speeds, moving northeast at about 7 miles an hour. And you can see the general motion that is expected over the next 24 to 72 hours. So as you can see, this is moving away from California, which is a good thing. And you're not crazy. We've been talking a lot about tropical cyclones this season. And there's a reason for that. We can talk about that at the break if you'd like. But the next thing I'd like to show you is where all the moisture from Odila's headed. This is a satellite image. It represents upper level moisture in the atmosphere. Are the lighter colors that you see. And so you can see here in the Sea of Cortez, Odila is still trying to maintain itself and spinning off some of this moisture in a counterclockwise rotation. You can see California outline here and you can see some of these thunderstorms that popped up this afternoon. So what I'd like to show you is that the bulk of this moisture from what we're going to call the remnants of Odila is actually headed to the northeast. A couple of days ago, some of the weather models did indicate that perhaps Southern California was going to have a lot more humidity and tropical moisture from Odila. But it looks now that it's being shut into the northeast. And as a result of that, Arizona, New Mexico are looking at some very significant flash flooding potential in the next 48 hours. So that is the good news, at least moving forward in the next 24 to 48 hours. I think we have one more day or so where we're under the gun for the potential of having more thunderstorms in the Santa Ana Mountains area. And the Coeur d'Amire, Rob, put together a nice graphic which I'd like to show you now. Shows you kind of where the threat is. Here you can see Southern California. There's the Silverado Fire there. You can see the cutoff line here is basically right over the Santa Ana Mountains where we've had our scattered thunderstorms. And then off to the east in the deserts, numerous thunderstorms that occurred today and will occur tomorrow in this tropical moisture. Greater than half an inch, some of these thunderstorms. So we still do have a threat for thunderstorms tomorrow. I think it's going to be a little less than today. And I think most of those thunderstorms will stay a little bit further east, affecting mostly the San Bernardino Mountain range and the other desert areas. This is model guidance that kind of shows you where the tropical moisture from Odila is going to go. And as you can follow it, you can see that tropical moisture moving off to the northeast and setting up over Arizona and New Mexico. So that's the next 72 hours of where we're going to be. And for those of you that thought that this was the only problem that we've got in the next 24 to 72 hours, I'd like to point out Polo. This is the next tropical cyclone that's all the way down off of Mexico, off of the East Pacific. And as I put this into motion, you will see that Polo is going to follow a very familiar path over the next week. Until it gets about midway up the Baja Peninsula, then it will move a little bit further west. So this is a little bit different than Norbert and Odila, the last two storms that we had, which brought the bulk of the moisture in over southwestern United States. So we're hoping that as Polo moves further northwest, that that moisture will stay off. But then again, we'll have to watch over the next seven or eight days and see what develops with Polo. How many folks had some rain drop on their windshield today? Anybody? Yeah, we did have a thunderstorm complex that developed east of the Santa Ana Mountains, set up shop near the Elsinore Front Country. And that ended up making it over the southern part of the Santa Ana Mountains. It affected mostly Southern Orange County. So we can see here are actually some raindrops that made it into the bucket. Believe it or not, we did get some rain for it. And you can see that .31, that was down in San Clemente. And I can vouch for that. That happened because that's where I live. Some other higher values definitely on the east side of the Santa Ana Mountains. Again, we can expect some of this activity tomorrow, but I expect it to stay a little bit further to the east than it did today. So I don't know. We're going to wait till questions afterwards, right? Okay, so that's all I have. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have. After we're done, I'll be at the back of the room. So I would now like to introduce, for a Silverado Fire overview and update, from the U.S. Forest Service, Tribuco District Ranger Darryl Vance, and from the Orange County Fire Authority, Division Chief Chris Concepcion. Come on up.
Evening, folks. As Pete said, we're here to give you an update on the fire. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take you from the start of the fire to about where we are today. And Ranger Vance is going to tell you about what work still needs to be done as far as rehab and fire. So last Friday at 10:32, we received a call, a report of flames behind someone's house on the hillside. By the time our Engine 315 got on scene, just a couple of minutes later, the engine captain, the initial report was 10 acres of brush moving rapidly into the hills. So we knew then that we had quite an issue in front of us. When I got the call, I looked outside of my door or outside of my window from my house in Mission Bejo, and I saw the smoke cloud. And I said, wow, we're going to be in for a long fight on this one. So thanks for the efforts of folks from the U.S. Forest Service and OCFA. Jumped on it pretty quickly. I've got to say, it doesn't come without preparation. And these are folks that we work with on a regular basis. And I think that came to fruition and worked out really well. The other thing that we actually had planned with the Orange County Sheriff's was we had a planning meeting yesterday for a drill that was supposed to happen tomorrow as far as getting ready for the fire season. Obviously, we cancel those. We have a real thing. But as you can see, we work real well together. We practice regularly. And I think that kind of preparation really helps with our cooperation from the federal side, the state side, as well as our other local agencies that work with us. So as far as the fire is concerned, it grew to 968 acres where it's at right now. As it stands, as of this morning, it is 93% contained. So we've got lying almost completely around it. At its peak, we had about 1,500 firefighters. So I mean, that incident grew very, very rapidly. We put a lot of firefighters on it. Luckily, even though it was very, very hot, there were no winds. And that really helped us out. The other thing that I've already kind of mentioned, the thing that I think that helped mitigate this issue as quickly as we were able to mitigate the issue was we were in unified command with the U.S. Forest Service almost immediately. Recognized when the fire started in Orange County jurisdiction, but the majority of the threat was to the National Force. Here to answer questions for the initial attack, Incident Commanders from both the OCFA and that was Battalion Chief Brian Young, who's in the front row, and he'll be here to answer any questions as well as Division Chief from the U.S. Forest Service, Gordon Martin. So as the questions come up, they'll be able to answer any specific questions as far as all the initial attack actions that took place.
Evening. I'd like to echo Chris's, the things he was saying about working together. I think the reason why we're able to be here today and have this meeting is because of the successes that we've achieved over the last few days. So the fire's starting to work its way out. And in the next couple of days, we'll be transitioning to a little bit smaller organization, away from the Incident Management Team to a more local affair. And then that part will settle out, the rehab side of things. And so I think what most folks are a little bit concerned about right now is what is the watershed urgency. And so, so folks know, we've got what's called the Bear Team, the Burn Area Emergency Response. Those are scientists out of our offices that are out doing analysis of what's occurred to the burned area. And some of the folks are familiar with the '07 Fire. A bear report was generated for that. And I think from what little we know at this point, because they're only in their second day of doing it, we're finding a lot of the same sorts of things. We've got pretty high, moderate to high burn intensity over a lot of the fire. We know in a lot of places, this is rough country. And there's not a lot of holding bags up on that shore. So stuff we need to start thinking about now and working together to see what we can do to figure out how we're going to get past this. So the bear report, we anticipate approximately seven days after we get to 100%, they'll go through a preliminary review. But reasonably, we'll be able to post it for the public pretty soon. Next couple of weeks, I would think. So folks can see kind of what we're seeing out there and what we're recommending as far as treatments. So be happy to discuss bear and under fire show with anybody else at the meeting. Thank you.
Another tall guy, so I'll just reach up. Coming up, our Director of Public Works, Jamie Silstein.
Thanks, Chris. Always appreciate working with you. Thanks for not adjusting the microphone. I came, if you haven't met me yet, nice to see a few familiar faces. But I came over from Arizona just a little bit less than a year ago. Looks like I made the right choice based on the Doppler radar there. Real quick, I want to introduce some key staff here this evening. Our ONM Manager, Cleve Bosme, if you could just reappear, please. AJ Hyme, our Field Operations for ONM, you all know AJ. Shannon Whito, our Strategic Communications Officer. Shannon's out here somewhere in the back. He's helping out, post-rates and things like that, thank you. And then you may have seen Corin, one of our inspectors, go up and down the road doing some hotspot checking. So real quick, we do basically four main things in these events. One is we keep the county maintenance crew as clear, you all know that. Number two, remove debris from the roadway under crossings so that things don't get jammed up there and they put pressure on the roadways or those bridges. We provide sandbags and rice bags for you all. And you can see on the handout, we have those at the Portola Pit and then some at the Jessica opening. I think 1,000 at the first and 500 at the second of each to help with you all in getting ready for this event. And if we get overflow, we do have at our operations center, bags. You can come down and do sandbags and things like that. And then the final thing we do is preemptive actions, which somebody may not know about as much. But we do check hotspots during the storm seasons for areas where we think might be problems to take those out, clear those before the storm ever hits here. We are looking at some advanced K-Rail placements, so the Jersey Bay area, the Congaree area. We're looking at some places where it might be a good idea to put those and some of the curves that we have, some areas that have the potential for some slides. You might be wondering why we don't get more of that. We just have to be careful because if we have those rails in a certification where the slide can actually push those into the roadway, they can become blockages instead of holding material back. So we're just cautious about that. And then finally, the other thing we do in these events is we test our storm center, our Department Operations Center. So we had that on for a little bit today during the flash flood warning. We activate that in Councilwood, rest of the Emergency Operations Center. So we're here to help and serve. Obviously, our operations maintenance crews live for these events all year round. Not that they like them for you all, but they practice routinely. And so they're happy to get out and get their equipment dirty. As you can see, we have some raiders and some load-ozers up and down the road here getting ready for the event. So I'm happy to take questions later. But to keep it moving, I'd like to introduce your Orange County Emergency Management Director, Don Boston. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to be real brief. Most of you will know emergency management by a different face than mine. I'm going to ask Vicky Osborn to stand right up because this is the face that you should be familiar with. Vicky is our point person for all of our canyon areas. And she really focuses on your needs. And I want to make that really clear. There are several canyon community members that have direct links in with Vicky. We appreciate your feedback as we move through this. This is not your first time doing this, right? We've been here before. Yeah? Okay. Vicky and I are going to be with you for a long time in the future. So this is not going to be our last deal. So we want to make sure you know a couple of different things. Emergency management is housed within the Sheriff's Department. We work directly with our county residents. We are your emergency management team. We connect you to volunteer resources that will help you manage issues on your private property. We will make sure that you're getting your alert and warnings. So today, we issued an Alert OC message. Now hopefully, some of you received that. That's going to be one of our methods for alerting and warning you of potential rain events that will be a hazardous situation. Alert and warning is one of the main areas that we focus on. We need to make sure that you know what is going on with the weather so that you can make your decisions, right? And you can prepare. Vicky?
Just a minute. Can you give me a show of hands, how many people were alerted? How many forgot that message?
Okay, that's not everybody. I expect more. I tell everybody, the canyon is my most prepared area of the entire county. I've got over 3 million people. I expect it to be 100%. So you need to talk to your neighbors. And if you need help doing that, call me, call Vicky. We will help you get connected. So that's a really hot button. But that's not the only way that we will get you your alert and warning, okay? We do understand that, you know, people need power for their phones and all of that stuff. So we will make sure that we're working in tandem with Public Works, Orange County Fire Authority, Sheriff's Department. And we form a unified command. This is the other piece that's important that emergency management brings to bear. We bring a cohesion to your county to make sure that you're getting good, solid information and that we're supporting you. You have great resources. But Mother Nature is a force to be reckoned with, right? We need to bring our forces together, make sure that they're making collaborative decisions and they're making protective action decisions for you and issuing them out to you with as much notice as possible. Emergency management will take the Burn Area Emergency Response Report that is put together, and we will formulate that into our emergency plan for debris flow in this area. What does that mean to you? Why do you care? That will give us trigger points. Trigger points that we know will be important for you to understand how much water those slopes can take before you need to move. And that's the honest information emergency management will make sure that you are receiving. Okay? Let's get back to Alert OC. You're going to go to alertoc.org to sign up. I have flyers at the back that were already placed. And we can send another link out to the canyon residents. I know you have several distribution lists. And I know you received information today from some of your representatives. So make sure you're doing that. Make a little box on your piece of paper. Register for Alert OC. Your next thing, you guys are prepared, right? Yes, raise your hand if you're ready with your preparedness kit. It's really important. Check it. You're my most prepared group. Prove it. And then make your plan, okay? You need to make sure that you're talking to your family members and that you're talking to your neighbors and that you're connected during that emergency. We need that to happen. During this fire, we were on the phone directly with canyon residents. One of them was Judy Bruno. She's in here somewhere, swaying it out with the rest of us. There you are, Judy. Judy was telling us about any of the members of your community that have any disabilities, access, and functional needs. People that are normally self-sufficient may not be as self-sufficient during a big rainstorm, during a fire, et cetera. We need that direct connection. We need that information. And that's how we're able to help you. Okay, so keep active within your canyon groups. And make sure you do those three things. Make sure your kit's up to date, your plan's up to date. Be informed by registering for Alert OC. I'm going to turn it over to Commander Moy. Commander Moy is the Commander over Field and Investigative Services for the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
You don't want to get on her bad side. She's very persistent. And you've probably heard it a few times already. Incident Command, Unified Command. And I hope that what you see up here is a unified front with all the county resources that are available to you to get you through this time. I know it's been a difficult week. And on the backside of those fires, here comes the flash flood warnings. You know, and you're probably thinking, boy, what is next? But I mean, that's why we're here tonight, to look forward, to prepare you and get you ready for what is to come. you ready for what is to come. From a law enforcement perspective, and as I mentioned, unified command, this is something that we do quite a bit with our partners. I want to recognize one more time our US Forest Service and our firefighters who just announced. For us, we get the privilege of working with them, training with them, serving up at the UOC. We are embedded in many operations together. And I also have to recognize our California Highway Patrol who's here tonight and is assisting with the local. You can, for the most part, I think you know what is expected of us in these type of events. We're going to be dealing with the evacuations, and for us, what that means is we'll be going up and down the neighborhoods with the PA, with the sirens, and when it's necessary, if it becomes a mandatory evacuation, we'll be going door to door. As for evacuations, excuse me, as road closures, we'll continue to work with California Highway Patrol and identify both the soft and the hard closures. But until then, you can expect to see increased patrol by our deputies, high visibility. We're here for you to answer any questions. You should see our air support above, we're looking for the hotspots during the red flag warnings. Our patrol is going to be out looking for those danger signs. So we are here to support you as well, and whatever we can do to assist that. With that, I'm also available to answer questions afterwards. I'd like to introduce our Director of Animal Care, Brian Trebek.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me, by the way. Anybody see their pets like they would see their kids? Anybody? Yes. I do too. In fact, my four-year-old says that our six-year-old pit bull, Rocky, is his big brother. So we're the same way, and I encourage you, as you prepare for the next event, to treat them as such. Anything or any number of animals that you have on your property, you should have a crate, a kennel, or a trailer, the same number that is able to take those animals in a large-scale event. I do want to say regarding this most recent event with Santiago Fire, I want to put a special thank you out there to Joanne Hubbell and Connie Nielsen. In reference to a lot of the animals in some of the areas of danger. I went through the last incident in Santiago, and this incident was night and day, but we can always do better. And we as an agency, much like the rest of the county and these other agencies who have spoke before me, and I can tell you, folks, having watched many of these agencies, the fire departments, the Forestry Service, CHP, the Sheriff's Department work, is, I stand in awe of those departments and the work that they do on behalf of the members of this community. Animal care is also a resource for you to use in an instance where there is a large-scale event, and you need to get your animals out, or you need to get to your animals. We can assist you as best we can to try and get you to those animals if you are unable. But we do recommend that you include in your plan something for the animals on your property to get them out in a large-scale incident. There's something provided, I believe in your paperwork, a link to our website. I also have a lot of business cards that I can provide you, various information and checklists that you can put together for your animals, but I do encourage you, as you prepare, to also include those furry family members that you might have at home. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any questions, if you're able to get up here, and we'll just take questions in a line here, if you're not able, if you want to put your hand up, and you're in the middle somewhere, I'll do my best after we have the Jose can get up here to bring this mic to you for questions.
Thank you. Most of you know me. I'm Tom Smysik, Smysik Ranch, West End, in the fire. And I was home to all of the 1,500 firefighters. They were welcome, and were courteous, and polite, and professional. Thank you, guys, for that. I have two questions, and it's not only my personal concerns, but concerns of the canyon. I addressed Todd's pitch on this earlier. The first is rapid response of the air crew, the helicopter. As I understand, the first alert I had was right around 11 o'clock when I heard sirens from my place, went down, saw the fire. They immediately dispatched fire, I guess a fire coordinator, red helmet, upon my property, who was calling in for fire, for airstrikes. It took, I'm guessing, about an hour and a half to two hours to get a helicopter. They brought in a small helicopter, and they were, at that point, the fire was just along the rim, of the upper rim of the property, of my canyon. It, I swear, if they would have had enough air power, they couldn't have got to that. That helicopter that was there for a while, and I guess there was one working up canyon, then about an hour or two later, they brought in two other helicopters. So now we had three helicopters, and they were doing intermittent drops. Then they called them off. And I asked, the guy's name was John, had a red helmet, I said, John, where's the air power here? He said, they called it off. I said, why? He said, they had a higher priority. I'd like to know, first two things. How fast can we expect to get air support up here? Because our canyons, you can't just get up there where the hose line, you've got to have helicopters that drop water, and that's because of our rugged terrain. That's number one. Number two, why did they call those helicopters off, which caused the burn of that property, which actually went down into the canyon, up behind me, and that was the major part of the final phase of the fire? Because they were doing, I think they did something like 40 airdrops the following day, but it burned that whole entire thing. So if I could get an answer on that, I'd sure appreciate it.
I'll let Division Chief Martin speak specifically to your statements. One thing I will provide some context of before he goes into the details is, just to provide you an understanding of, your vantage point was merely one canyon up in the large magnitude of this incident. Now, Division Chief Gordon will talk about the specifics as far as the diversion, which was actually a little bit different than what your understanding was.
We have a policy in the fire service that there's priorities on which fire is more important. Human life is like number one, but initial attack, new initial attacks, is what they were pulled away for. And it was only the air tankers, and not all of those, that were pulled away. Helicopters were never pulled away. If you didn't see them for a while, they were either working on a different part of the fire, or they were down for a fuel cycle. Those are Orange County's helicopters. They did a bang-up effort, they called the pilots back to staff up their third helicopter. Mid helicopters from other parts of the state had come in to help us. The Orange County Sheriff's helicopter was there as well to help out. And they never went away. If they were gone for a while, they were either working someplace else, or they were down for a fuel cycle that takes a little while to get them to refuel. So the helicopters never went away. The other thing about this area, as you probably are well aware, there's that big 500 KB power line that goes through the area. That means we have to be a little bit cautious in using aircraft in there, both so they don't run into the power poles and the lines, and so that they don't dump on. If we had lost that line, and it went out a couple of times there briefly, we would have lost all power from basically here south into North San Diego County. So we wanted to avoid that. So that makes us a little cautious, because wire strikes kill pilots just about every year. So if, and the other thing that we run into is a problem, and was a problem on this fire, is the smoke. If the pilots can't see, they can't fly. And that smoke column was bending over and interfering with which side of the fire we could get onto. But I will say, if you look at the maps in the back, Division A is on the map back there, that is the side that's on this side of the fire, the side closest to your property. That's where we made our initial push, because that's where the bulk of the houses are. So that was our priority, was to try and keep that flank in check. We tried, we tried real hard. It's so dry out there, one little thing rolling down into the next canyon, and it would take off and burn out a bolt. But we had the aircraft that we needed, you know, when we needed it, to the best of our ability. We had, we had the very large air tankers, the DC-10s, were up flying and reinforcing the power. We had state aircraft, we had federal aircraft, and as well as the county helicopters were all out there. They were diverted to a new start up in Cone Pass very briefly, when they got a handle on that one, and they all came back.
Just one final comment. Once they left, they never came back. When they left about, I'm guessing about 3 o'clock, and another helicopter, there were no power lines in that area, and it burned down that canyon up the other side and over that plateau. So there was no air power or no air support in that canyon once they left. But I appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir.
Nice question.
Okay, so years ago, we had a party, and we cleared out all the Arundo cane from the creek. So since, okay, dinner? No. Okay, years ago, we had a community effort where we cleared Arundo cane, thank you, Sherry, Arundo cane from the creek before an El Nino event was scheduled. Well, since then, fish and game's gotten a little interest, and we're all afraid to touch the creek, and I believe there are, we would need help from above the state, federal resources. There's a lot of dead trees, dead elders, especially now that we've been out of water and the trees are stressed. Now, one of our local firemen at a meeting said, well, I'm not going to go to jail to tell you to clear the creek, but the creek, it's an issue, it's a big issue. The creek is dangerous. If it builds a dam, and then the dam breaks, life gets real interesting for all of us really quick. So if we can be a little proactive, get fishing game on board, so we don't go to jail, that would be a good thing, and I would bless you to the heavens forever if we could get something like this accomplished. The creek is an issue, we have a lot of debris in there, and it needs help, federal or state or well beyond me. But thank you very much, and that's my wish and hope.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that. I remember hearing stories about that. So we'll make some notes here, Cleve, we'll try and provide assistance with fishing game. Any way for fishing game here tonight, by the way? Maybe? Lucky? Okay. I know we struggle with some of the same issues for our projects too, so we'll try and give you a link to be there. Thanks for the comment.
As Dana said, I'm Judy Bruno. For the county, I work as Sector Lead for Coed OC's Access and Functional Needs. For this community, I am Chair of the Canyon Accessibility Network. Vicki, they were, I just want to thank them, because I was in contact with them through this whole thing. If we had had any resident in this community with a medical or an access problem, we could have called them. They would have been right here. Vicki sends me an email, and she says, can you send me a list? And I said, canyon people don't do lists. And we don't. But I want everyone in this community to know, if you have a medical need, if you have an access need, to contact me. I am in the book as the ADA Coordinator. I can reach out during an emergency and get the help that you need if you have any of those problems during, that do need that help, it depends. So please feel free to contact me at any time, and we will give you the help you need.
Hi, I'm Sherry, and I just live here. I just want to tell you how incredible you're fighting at this fire. You just beat the hell out of that fire. The helicopters flying in from the Irvine Lake area, I can see them going in, and they fly out directly over my house. And at one point on Saturday, I was timing them, and at no point did I not see a helicopter for any longer than 1 minute and 37 seconds. Seriously, I mean, you did rock, that's all I can say. There's some small details, I think, that need to be unkinged in. I know there were some issues with animals in the fire area in the evacuation area. People couldn't get in to get them out, they should have been taken out. I don't think animal control was proactive enough, and I think something else needed to be done there. I don't know how we can work on that, but I do believe that needs to be done. The other thing is, is I think, just from my point of view, I think something needs to be done about keeping people out on Santiago Canyon room for hours and hours and hours, when in fact, there isn't large equipment necessarily moving in. I drove behind two absolutely enormous, I don't even know what they are, military armored gadgets that are enormous. I drove behind two of them, and in front of two US Forest Service trucks, and I lived to tell the tale. And my point to you is, is you could have brought people in in small groups and had them get to the cafe. They're in their community, they can get to their kids, they can get to their pets, they're not sitting out on a 55 mile an hour roadway. It's actually a lot safer. And I know that a lot of people think, well, you can't have these cars mixed with big vehicles, but in fact, you can. I'm living proof. And there were other people that came in, mixed in. When the big vehicles weren't coming in, they were allowing a few people through at first, and then they, I guess, just closed everything off. But I really think that whole attitude needs some work. And I think it creates a better, a better situation with the community when you're not so heavy-handed about access. I mean, after 2007, to be honest with you, we're all real gun-shod. And, well, I can't say all, but I know I'm very gun-shod, and I just freak out when there's a fire, totally freak out. And I don't care what it took to get home, I would have done it. I don't care how far I had to walk, how many barricades I had to drive through, I was getting home. So, and I know I'm not the only one that feels that way. So please, come and be a part of that. Thank you very much.
Just real quick on the animal issue, thank you, Sherry. We actually did receive several calls to escort some folks in to get their animals. On, I think, one or two separate occasions, we actually turned right back around, I guess, based on where the fire was at. And then a couple of other occasions, we were successful. So I do encourage you, those are definitely communication kinks that we absolutely need to work out, so I couldn't agree with you more. I do encourage you, though, you know, in a future incident, to please call us, even prior to evacuations, to find out where reception centers are. If you are going to need escorts, or the potential of escorts, to let us know. Actually, I'm going to be meeting with some of the folks probably next week or the week after, we were planning on, Joanne, to start talking about some of those issues that came up with folks that couldn't get back to their homes and get their pets. But do understand, when we start to escort, if the fire department does turn us around, we have to respect that and those lines that are drawn. So that's why, you know, we really encourage you to make those preparations, be proactive prior to the incident, if you're able. Obviously, some folks weren't able to get back, so we understand that. But thank you.
And just to address the traffic, and those who are curious and want to take a look at the burn sites, you know, we're, obviously, we're going to be increasing patrol checks. We'll have that high visibility, so we'll keep people moving through your backyards, through your neighbor, and trying to move them along. The other part is a little difficult when we have our fire, fire crews responding, and they are coming in with very heavy equipment, and those are narrow roads. Went back there today just to take a look, and with that major of a response, I
And with that, that major of a response, I know we're dealing with over 700 firefighters out there, and with that comes equipment, and it is difficult to get in. So we try to balance that out. But I will say one more time, when there is a hard closure and a soft closure, depending on what decision we make with that, we will limit who comes in.
What about the news people though? News people were allowed to come in.
Thank you, they have the rights.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to ask a question for disaster preparedness. My name is Linda Kearns and I live at the mouth of Williams Canyon on Jackson Road, and I was severely affected by the 2007 debris flow. And I expect that to happen this time again. So what is your plan to prepare us and people upstream for the debris flow? It is going to happen. So we all have our disaster preparedness kits and our plans, obviously, but what is the educational process? What is the preparation for the debris flow? It took me four months to dig out after the 2007 flood, debris flow, so I'd like to know what that educational plan is. Thank you.
I think, let me make sure we're going to address your question correctly. You're, you're more concerned about perhaps maybe the hot spots and how to prepare your homes with regard to debris flow, right? Is that, you're not worried about your kit, you got that covered. You want to know the hot spots, where the debris is going to flow.
I want to know what the plan is from the officials here tonight related to the debris flow and is it imminent? Because it will happen once the first rain hits. And we know what happened in 2007. So I think there's education to be had for people who live along the stream bed, clearing those off, getting those prepared. There are other things that you as forest officials may be able to do up higher in relation to rock securing, boulder securing, whatever is up there, it's coming down. So what are we going to do to prepare ourselves and our community? Because you're the experts, so we're counting on you.
Okay, thank you for the question. Thanks for calling us experts. But you all really on your property, you all are the experts because you know exactly what's going to happen. I just wanted to mention, we have a kind of a brochure here, it's a little booklet prepared by the Orange County Fire Control District called Homeowner's Guide for Debris and Erosion Control. So this will inform you all how to use the materials that Public Works can provide, sandbags, or rice paddies, whatever the case may be, and your personal experience and what happens on your properties. Because you all know what happens on private property a lot better than we do in public works, we take care of the meat and stuff. So if I can make this available to you, that'd be great. Anybody else who wants to do this, probably can get this up on our website. You can do that on the Storm Center website here in the next few days. That's a great question. This, this is a lot more detail than I can get into in a mic, but that's the first step, I would say, for private properties.
Okay, we did stand that, just to let you know. And it took away not only the sandbags, but, you know, all the landscaping, rocks, everything in its way came down. So I think that it needs to be secured further up or at some point above us because it will be coming down.
And I don't want to steal Mike's, Mike Petrus' thunder, but I think once we get the bear report issued, that is going to give us a lot of data, and then we're going to have to reconvene and share the hot spots with you. So we will, we will work on that once we get the data, because that's what we need. We need all of the particulars about what's burned, what we expect the soil saturation to be, you know, there's a lot of science that goes into that report, and we're already leaning and asking for it. So we were asking for it yesterday, when are we going to have a report? We need, we need that data so that you can prepare your homes. So once we get that report, and maybe you want us to come up and speak to the timeframe, we'll get that report, we're going to bring our response agencies together, develop our triggers. We need to meet with you, talk with, talk with you about the hot spots, make sure you have access to resources so that you can prepare your home.
And I think those are very good concerns. One thing I would probably draw your attention to in the back there, there's a map that's got a lot of red and orange and yellow on it right there. One of our GIS personnel put that together, showing what the percentage of slope in the area is. And, you know, it's something we need to be aware of, that this is a dynamic system. So, you know, until we get to the specific data right now to inform what happened in this fire, we're a little bit limited, so we're trying to get that out as soon as we can. I will let you know that Forest Service has a sister agency called NRCS, that's the, what is it called? Natural Resource Conservation Service. And they actually have a program, Emergency Watershed Protection Program, that actually in some cases can, can help fund projects in state and private lands. So it's worth looking at. I believe we have contact information on the back. And there's also a couple of bills on the, on the wall there that have some more information. So please give it a look. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Roger Rome, my wife is Jen, and I live on Hill Highway just east of the Port of Origin of the fire. And I just wanted to let everybody know that our paid call volunteers, you know, Standing John, coming up and literally saving our home. And Karen, Steve Kerrigan, Brett Peterson, Bill Grenwald, and Tom Reisner, with the gentleman from the Fire Department. Our paid call and our volunteers and how important they are to our community. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Deckard, and I've only lived here 40 years. The gentleman from, is it Planning or Public Works, you made a very interesting and pointed statement. We are the experts. We live here day in and day out. When the water comes down, we know where it flows. And several of us, in fact, have assorted construction machinery to go and clean out a creek or help the water go where it should go instead of where it wants to. I, I don't know how to say this politely, but as far as fish and game or fish and wildlife, whatever they're called this week, as far as they're concerned, we are not going to sit around and wait for one of them to contact a whole bunch of superiors in a telephone chain that may go all the way back to Washington DC. Because we can't wait for that round trip of the message. I've got a tractor, several other people do, and if we see the water doing us dirty, we are going to take care of it. About that, but we, we ran out of patience once. And with all due respect to our gentlemen from the OC Sheriff's Department, maybe even the CHP, we are the ones who in '07 did not evacuate the canyon. Recalcitrant, we were called cantankerous. I rather delight in the, the one we said to leave, volunteer say and help, and we did.
Hi, I'm Jeff Sarkisian. I'm president of the Inner Canyon League. My daughter's cantankerous, it's sound. The Inner Canyon League got started, really in the aftermath of the 1969 floods. We did a lot of disaster relief. So with this particular incident, we got together and figured out who needs relief. We still have money left over from donations made in 2007. And the answer is, didn't seem like there's a huge need, but some people might need food for the losses that they got for three days going without electricity. So we put together a little program, if you know someone who needs extra, you know, a gift, if you will, $50 or $100 worth of food, if that would make a difference to them, that's something that we can do right away. And that being said, we're also thinking about other kinds of disaster relief efforts following our next disaster, which is, it's on the calendar, I'm not sure what the exact date is. Check with that. Okay, thank you.
Scared of these things. Hi, my name's Joanne Hobol. Hi, I'm here too. In my part, I think you did a fantastic job. It was 98 difference between 2007 San Diego and 2014 Silverado, and just seven years and a month, maybe, or six years and 11 months, actually. I think more than Linda was, was, going with the question was, when 2007 hit, Public Works came up, Nacho came up with his engineers and went to each individual property with engineers and then kind of gave an overview of what, kind of advice per se of what they thought would be best with that individual home. And I think that's maybe what she was going with this, was she wants advice. And I think a lot of us here tonight want advice on what the engineers think is going to happen at times behind home A, home B, home C. We know Medeska very well, where the mud goes. You know, a lot of folks open some run it due to, but a lot more of us know that it comes down, and when it comes down, it comes down hard. And there are homes buried, and, well, I think you guys will address, but I think that's where she was going with her question. So if we can answer that, that'd be great.
We're certainly happy to provide assistance, Joanna. Thanks for bringing that up and maybe clarifying the question. Sorry if I missed it. You've got kind of two levels of support you can get from Public, from Public Works. You've got our field inspectors who can give you kind of more on the, on the ground type of, and elements kind of maybe quick and dirty about what they see, what their experience might be, or helping you with your experience, experiences. And then the second level is a higher type of design effort with our engineering crews. The JU Tech could be something more at nature. So depending on what your needs are, we're happy to help, but just kind of think about, do I just need somebody to stop by, maybe they're on the road anyway, checking hot spots, maybe they can give me some advice? Or do I need a little bit more comprehensive level of effort? So we're happy to provide both. And then you all, as we talked about already, you kind of have a feel for how it's going to go and maybe we can just help you get there. Anyway, thanks for the question.
Thank you all for coming to hear this evening. I'm Mary Schreiber from the Fire Safety Council. Funny thing, we have a chipper day and all canyons cleanup scheduled for this weekend. Just because one side of the canyon burned doesn't mean the other side hasn't, or we still all need defensible space around our house. I watched how the Forest Service, Hardshot or whoever they were, they were phenomenal, backfired the hill across the way. And one thing I was worried about was some cedar trees that were in the power lines across the way. And when I looked at it afterwards, I saw how they had trimmed around and limbed up. So when that fire went through, those cedar trees did not burn the whole rest of the hill because of dispensable, defensible space around that. And there were no ladder fuels, because if those cedar trees had gone up, there were power lines and communication lines in those trees. So those trees were safe to keep our communication. So I saw how ladder fuel, ladder, removing the ladder fuel around a blazing hillside works. This is something for all of you to consider. And I know it's hotter than you know what outside, and Saturday is going to be hot too, but we have a chipper day. And I was just told that the hand crew will be there helping us, and will be there if there's a need there Sunday. So we've got this weekend to work on cleaning up what's been cut and to improve your dispensable space. It's also this weekend, all canyons cleanup, there'll be dumpsters at the church and at the old school side for the large items that you want to get rid of. Please don't leave them on the side of the road and some of the white spots. This is your chance to get rid of all of that stuff. The dumpsters fill up fast, that I believe is from 8 to 11. Chipper Day is going to be from 9 to 4 on Saturday, and very likely 9 to 4 on Sunday. The Orange County Fire Authority is providing news and we still, we've cleaned up a lot, but we still need more cleanup, especially on the south side of Silverado Canyon Road. And remember, Medeska and Williams, the rest of you guys in Trubuco, we're all involved in this. So we look forward to seeing you out there on Saturday with loads and loads of brush. Thank you.
My name is Laura Meadows, and I went to, we wanted to evacuate Friday night, I live on Shady Brook. We went to it because the smoke was so thick, and everybody knows me, I really care about my animals. And so I decided, I have two birds, and I decided to get us out. We went down to the Serrano High School, there was nobody there, nobody. That was supposed to be the evacuation spot. I called, oh, El Madino, whatever. Serrano, El Madino, whatever. It was thick to me, and I care about my animals, especially my birds, can't take that kind of smoke. So we went to evacuate, I called my insurance company, and they said unless it's a mandatory evacuation, we will not cover you. I had some friends that said I could stay there, but with my three cats, two dogs, and two birds, they said, "Never mind." We had to turn around and go home and tough it out. So, you know, that was not a good experience for me, but I want you, you guys did such a fantastic job with everything. We were okay. Once we went back, it was okay when we stayed in the house as far as the smoke went. So, but I want to thank you guys, you did a great job with that fire. Thank you.
That is, that's a good prompting for us to thank the American Red Cross. Tom Woodard is here, if you can stand up, you might recognize Tom. Tom was with us during the December 2010 rainstorm, and Tom did a tremendous amount of work in the canyon to try and get us disaster assistance. And perhaps, Tom, you want to speak to the shelter?
Certainly, and thank you very much, Donna. I don't know, if you could tell me what time that you were at the El Madino High School, I'm a little surprised to hear that. 9 o'clock at night, okay. I'm not quite sure where you showed up at El Madino. What I can tell you is, we did have shelter team at El Madino High School until 10:00 PM on Friday night, okay? We opened that at the request of Donna in the Sheriff's Department. We did communicate that information as to where the shelter was through a number of outlets, through local media, through social media, and also through our partners at the Sheriff's Department. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry that you had that experience. What I will share with you is that we did have shelter staff on site at the gymnasium. We kept shelter staff from when they were dispatched, I think we had folks on site from about 2:00 PM, if I remember correctly, until about 10:00 PM. We did not have anyone show up at the shelter location. So we did make the decision in cooperation with our emergency management partners to go ahead and close the shelter for the evening, but we did post information outside the gymnasium. Again, we provided information via local media, social media, and again, our emergency management partners as to if folks did need assistance, where they can get ahold of us, how they can get that assistance. We did have shelter teams on standby if for some reason the situation did change. I am sorry that we had that experience. Normally, when we open a shelter, we make every effort possible to not only open the shelter location and make it visible, but we try to put up signs around the area, we try to make that very visible, very obvious as to where that location is. But I will take that concern back to the folks that do that. I will let them know that you had that complication, and certainly we will be mindful of that in the future.
This is a really good reminder to, to let you understand, or help you to understand that when we do issue an evacuation, we are, our normal practice is to pop up a shelter and get a shelter in place. So that's what happened this time. Usually in Orange County, we do not have large attendance or a large reporting group at the shelter. And so we probably about hourly check in with that shelter to find out how many the shelter has in population. I will say this, though, if a decision is made to scale back on active shelter activation, we have our hotline up. So throughout this incident, we had a hotline up, and we put that hotline out to, through that Alert OC Mass Notification System, we get it out through your canyon connections, all of the different groups that are in the canyon. We post it to our press releases, and so it's on the board supervisors' websites and et cetera. et cetera. Don't hesitate to call that number. That hotline is there for your resource. There is a live person on the other end of that hotline that is up at the Emergency Operations Center to answer all of your questions. That's what they're there for. So please, don't hesitate to call. If you arrive at the shelter, it doesn't look like it's active, call that number, ask when it's going to be active. That's a really good question. And if you can't, if for some reason you can't find the hotline number, call Sheriff's Dispatch. We always share the information with the Sheriff's Dispatch Center, and they're always up to the minute. If they don't have the answer, they will get myself, they will get Vicki, or the rest of our team. We're here to support you.
Donna, thank you very much. And the hotline is a great resource, I definitely want to emphasize that. The other thing that I'll, that I'll share specific to Red Cross is if you're looking for information from the Red Cross, be it shelter information, or you're just looking for information on general disaster preparedness or other information that we might have, you can always get ahold of us at 1-800-RED-CROSS. That is a 24/7 number. It does route to your local office after hours, it does route to our emergency folks. So that's another resource. The hotline is great, and when there is a major incident here in the county, I would definitely recommend that, but that's also another resource that's available to you. Thank you.
Yeah, it's just going to be nice and different, it's okay. All right. Hi, I'm Pam. This is kind of a basic question, and we were all batting around talking about it, about how the fire got started, and all thinking, oh gee, we love our metal things with our wood things. So we, so the discussion was, it'd be really great if we could get some guidelines about maybe things to avoid, or like, don't do a compost pile, or I don't know if that'd be readily available today, but just something like that, I think would be very helpful, because people would certainly be mindful to it if they knew what the guidelines were.
It's a great question. Thanks for bringing that up, and we're remiss to bring up our prevention program. We've got a great wildfire preparedness program called the Ready, Set, Go program with the Orange County Fire Authority that actually was started after the Freeway Complex fire in 2008. And it's got some really good information as far as the prevention methods that you can do, not only for yourself as far as preparing for the wildfire, but also your properties, and how to make sure that, that your, your property is protected. So we can get that information, there's a website, readysetgooc.org.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Heinz, and I am a very proud, brand new resident here in Silverado, three weeks new. But I'm hearing all this talk about alerts, websites, and staying in touch, but you know, after 9 o'clock Friday evening, I had no, I actually live within about a quarter of a mile where the, west of where the evacuation zone was, but I had no internet, no phone service, no cable for the entire weekend. And I want to know where the, who can still sell us a normal landline that is always connected and able to deliver based on Cox or AT&amp;T or... Or, the other thing I want to say is, in the same way that I got fire insurance through the Cal Fair Plan for my home, maybe we should require cell phone providers to pool their resources together and give us a cell tower here to...
Yeah, yeah.
If you want to sell, if you want to sell us cell coverage, then provide it here in the canyon too. I mean, we're, I felt, that was the only discomfort I felt was not being connected with the outside world.
It's an excellent question. Number one, let me, I'm going to ask Vicki to reach out to our utility providers, because sometimes our utility providers bring those phones to disaster fairs, and they hand them out as giveaways, for the phones that do not require power. But I do want to, let's really talk turkey here. If you, if we burn up your telephone poles, you're losing your data, your cable, and your, and your telephone, right?
Right.
Okay. So you need to go to someplace like Radio Shack, et cetera, and make sure that you have a hand crank power supply for your mobile phones. Hopefully they work in your areas, you know where they work. You need to, you need to use the basic, if, if some of them work. I understand that it's, we definitely understand the topography, because we have similar problems with our radio systems. You know your network already, you're the experts. You know if family radios work, you know if your cell phones work. You need to look at the redundancies and put them in place. Get hand crank information, hopefully a weather radio works for you. If it works, definitely have your hand crank weather radio, batteries. Vicki's chomping at the bit, come on Vicki.
Okay, we've been together seven years, right? Who does not have part of Canyon Watch, one of the radios that was provided in this room? I know there's probably three, because we have a new resident. That's the big picture here, because Donna hit the nail on the head. If we lose data, internet, cellphone, Alert OC's not going to work. However, I will still communicate with all you guys like I always have done, or someone in my office, Donna or I, we will still reach out to Mary, to Joanne, to Smizek, to whoever, because we have built these relationships, right? So your job is, when the, when the emergency starts happening, is turn on the radio. Here comes, oh, thank you, Vanna. So as we all know, right, Connie Nelson's now in charge of Canyon Watch. So if you do not have a radio, or if you do not know how to use it, we will give you lessons. I will even give you lessons. I'm from the county, I'm here to help.
Yeah, we've got an idiot, honestly, who's playing on our frequency. We're working with the Sheriff's Department to find out who that idiot is, who has no other thing to do in life but sit there and play on the radio.
But it still makes the system ineffective.
It does.
It doesn't work.
And I know, but you can play. If there's an actual disaster, can we talk in between the La Cucaracha? Yes?
Actually does pretty good.
Yes, I understand. Tool that we can use.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. We are looking at other frequencies for you guys, county communities, so we are aware of it. We're working with Connie, because that's what we're trying to do, is fix this problem. We know about it. But the big thing is, is that you guys can't just think in a little toolbox of, well, this has an air option music, it doesn't work. Well, if internet's out, we need cell companies. They all tie together. When I sent out the Alert OC message, what, does anyone remember what my last statement was? Anybody? Did you listen to me?
Yes.
I know you forgot. The last statement was, I knew Cox Communication is still working against some, communication's up to you folks. Tell a neighbor. You guys, and I tell the, I tell the county that this is the most, like Donna Boston said, this is the most prepared community we have in the county, because you look out for each other. When I called Judy, I already knew Leslie was the one that was on this away that need, might need some help, right? Because neighbors already checked on her, that's what you guys do. So don't think in the box. We have a new gentleman here, he's only been here three weeks, he doesn't know all you yet. He's going to get to know you very quickly, right? So that's all I'm saying is, if you don't have this... Sorry?
You know, I live right, almost next door to the fire started, and where I am, there's, I get nothing, I, I owe you to get my guy. I, I get nothing.
So what I'm going to do, because we're at 8:30, I'm going to team up with Connie Nelson outside in the corner, and if you have an issue, you don't have the Alert OC yet, so let's fix this, all right?
Can we get our radio back?
We're going to take one more question, and then for the, for the time consideration, we're going to call it quits. If you have a chance outside, one of the panel members or somebody else in the room is going to be able to answer your question. As we clear out, that's, that's fine, we'll take one more question.
Hi, my name is Valerie Maldonado, and I have two quick things. First, for animal control, thank you guys. My son, we were not in mandatory evacuation area, but my 10-year-old was scared to that, and we left when the power went out. And I called Animal Control knowing that you guys would take our animals. We have two dogs, two snakes, and two lizards. And Animal Control took them all. Not only did the emergency night shift guy respond to me and call me back, but he met me at Animal Control's facility at midnight to take my animals. Thank you. Second thing is, it was posted on our community website, and I had thought about it, but we're scheduled to have a water main replaced out here at the main road. And the person who posted it thought that it would not be a good idea with fire season coming up to be tearing up that road. And I just wanted to address that because getting in and out should we have in evacuation is going to be a big, big problem. So thank you.
Thanks for wearing our red, 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 red. I saw the construction side of it, I'm going to, I'll turn over some of my...
All right, I want to thank you all for coming tonight. Listen, in 2007, I stood in Portola Hills, and I stood in Irvine, and I stood in the canyons, and drove up and down Silverado Canyon Road and Santiago Canyon Road, asking for what? Where is the air support in this county? We did not get air support, and that's why our county was on fire. And now, Orange County Fire Authority has four helicopters, all our pilots are trained for nighttime flying, and all of our helicopters are equipped to drop water. That is a significant accomplishment on behalf of the Orange County Fire Authority in 2007. And I think honestly, the reason that it was so successful, and the fire is not still burning, it's 95% plus or minus contained, is because we decided to look ourselves in the mirror and become self-sufficient. And this community, as you got all the accolades tonight, has been incredibly self-sufficient. So let's keep up the good work. This team is absolutely committed to this community. It is a team, we care deeply about this community, and you have our absolute commitment that we will continue to exercise and execute this coordinated effort. So we'll continue to communicate with you. Some of the department units have homework assignments. I love that thing about the water main being replaced. Who would think about doing that at this time of year? So we'll check into that, we'll make sure we follow through. And then lastly, God bless our public safety officials, both our CHP, Sheriff, our fire crews, and all the women who came in from all over the state to help us here in Orange County. That's what it's all about. So thank you, have a great night, drive safely, God bless you.